Any further discussion? If you can, all is in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, all is both the same side. That motion carries. I'd like to open up the public hearing for the Taylor Field subdivision preliminary and final plat application SD-10-22. Anybody in the room? Would like to speak on or against the Taylor Field subdivision preliminary and final plat application SD-10-22? How about online? Last chance to person or online for the Taylor Field subdivision preliminary and final plat application. Commissioners entertain a motion for that, please.
I move that we close the public hearing for the Taylor Field subdivision.
Second. We've been seconded, any further discussion? If you can, all is in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is both the same side. That motion carries. Thank you, the final public hearing this morning. Amendments to the Albany County zoning resolutions affecting zoning changes, conditional use requirements and definitions. Anybody in the room would like to speak on or against the amendments to the Albany County zoning resolution affecting zoning changes, conditional use requirements and definitions? Okay, how about online? Last chance for it in person or online. Commissioners entertain a motion to close that public hearing, please.
I move that we close the public hearing for the amendment to the Albany County zoning resolution.
Second.
The move is seconded, any further discussion? Hearing seen, all is in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is both the same side. That motion carries. Item four, comments from the public. We'll take public comments this morning. I'm sorry, we don't have a lecture. You can just give it to us from your seat or we'll take it online also. Yes, please, Sarah.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with the county commission on behalf of the Pilot Hill project. I just wanted to give you a brief update on the progress that we made this year with Pilot Hill and acknowledge the tremendous ongoing commitment that the commissioners have made to this project for our community and our county. I do have a few slides. Thank you, the IT specialist who's helping me with this. You can switch to the next slide. Just as a side note, these two young fellows in this first picture were out on the property on their very first mountain bike ride, and they were really honored and thrilled to be able to get their picture taken. This summer, we were really busy building out the land use plan that the commissioners approved in 2019. The plan includes in total over 40 miles of additional trails in addition to what had already been established in the schoolyard section of the property. This summer, we, and last summer, we built 14 new trail miles. So we've extended our opportunities for our community to recreate on the property from the edge of the city of Laramie all the way to the top of Po Mountain in several different routes. We also have removed thousands of pounds of hazardous fence material, primarily barbed wire and old fencing that was on the property that had fallen down over the years, again, ensuring safe passage for both our community members and the residents that live up there, the elk and mule deer and pronghorn and various other critters. We've completed about two-thirds of phase one of the project, of the three-phased development plan, and our trail counters indicate that we had about 150,000 visits to the property last year alone. So we know that increased use is occurring on the property. We've had a lot of really positive feedback from guests and visitors, and also we've had really good comments from people that are helping us just be boots and ears on the ground as we maintain the property. This past year, we also had an increased number of requests for events or use of the property by formalized groups. ACSD school districts, along with the Cheaton Science School, had over 200 children out on the property doing science-based summer school education programs. The rec department hosted a series of bike races on the property. The Laramie Middle School and Laramie High Schools cross-country teams and their mountain bike teams and track athletes use the property regularly. The university has research going on on the property right now, specifically we're watching movement on trail cams across both the WHMA, the recreation corridor and adjoining private land to make sure that we're not creating trails in areas that will create a huge disturbance for the wildlife up there. The Cathedral Home comes out once a week. We know that different other nonprofits have hosted races and events, and we certainly have had a lot of activity just by seniors on the go, by citizens that go out and use it as a daily opportunity to get some fresh air and a little mental and physical stress release. You can go on to the next page, please. I wanted to just highlight something that we're really excited about this year. As you know, with the schoolyard system in place, a lot of mountain bikers and walkers as well have had an opportunity year-round to have recreational access close to town. This year, we emphasized building out a system a little bit to the north of the schoolyard section that is pedestrian-only area. The trail that you see on the map in yellow is what's called universally accessible. So the grade on that trail is 5%, no more than 5% across the entire trail system. It's a six-foot wide trail with an aggregate surface. So the hope is that any individual, whether they're walking with small children or they might be in a wheelchair or pushing a jogging stroller or something, would be able to utilize that trail a year-round. It's just under two miles. Trails two and three, which are shown there in orange, are additional pedestrian running and hiking trails, creating a total of five-mile loop that, weather permitting, should be usable by the community all year-round. We haven't yet put in all of the interpretive signage and the benches that we will have in that area, but that's on our to-do list for next summer. We feel like this project that was done in partnership with both the Wyoming Conservation Corps and with a group called Single Track is going to be one of the premier trails for the Albany County citizens, and so we're really excited about that. It also helps us link to the adjoining Jacoby Ridge Trail, which is one of the city park trail systems, and eventually to the trailhead that we'll be hoping to establish off Willard Drive. That's it for the slides that I have today, but I did want to make sure that the commission knew that we are making progress on the land use plan. We're carefully working toward the goals that this community set forth to Pilot Hill and charged us with, and we are deeply grateful for the ongoing support of the county commission, for the representation we have on the board, both by your appointees and by Commissioner Ibera. And thanks for just the generosity that Heber has provided to us, providing free porta-potties on the property. Those of you that were out there this summer, I think probably really appreciated having that when you get down on a long walk. Inevitably, the bathroom is the first place you want to shop. So are there any questions or concerns that the commission might have that I could take back to the board of directors?
Commissioners. Sir, thank you so much for your work in the work that Pilot Hill Board does. It's fantastic place. One of the 150,000.
Good to know. Well, please don't ever hesitate to reach out if you have any questions or concerns. Thank you for your time.
As long as I'm alive, I'll donate that.
Woohoo, we're gonna keep you to it.
Never paid for our services.
Any other public comments?
Yes, please, Anisa.
Commissioner, good morning. I just wanted to let the commissioners know and anyone who's listening that Human Resources is sponsoring a holiday food drive to help stock the Laramie Soup Kitchen. There are now boxes on the first, second, and third floor. If anyone outside of the courthouse would like a box, please let me know. We're happy to deliver one. That will run from yesterday through the 16th, and then we'll deliver it to the soup kitchen on the 19th. So we just wanted to make you all aware of what we're doing.
Thank you, Anisa, for thinking about that and for publicizing that. Appreciate that. Anybody else, other comment? Commissioners entertain a motion to close the public comment.
I move.
Second. Second, any further discussion? Hearing seen, all is in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is both the same side. That motion carries. Five disclosures, Commissioner Ibera, disclosure.
I have them.
Commissioners, any disclosures?
I have none.
And I have none also. Item six, considerations of changes on the agenda. Needs to be any changes to the agenda. And then item seven, approval of the consent agenda. Pull things out from the consent agenda, whatever your pleasure is.
I move that we approve consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing seen, all is in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is both the same side. That motion carries. Thank you, we are now on the regular agenda. Just a little heads up, there are microphones in the room that are pretty sensitive, and so if you have a side conversation and don't want it memorialized on YouTube, you might want to move out to the hall because it'll be out there on YouTube as part of this meeting that we host. So item eight, present for approval, funding agreement to the board of commissioners of Albany County, Wyoming, and Albany County Fire District Number One for the use of ARPA funds for employee assistance program services in the amount of $180,000 from the date of the execution to July 31st, 2024. Bailey, and I see Luke's here also.
So real quick before Luke jumps in. Luke sent me a couple corrections to our agreement this morning. I passed on to Jennifer. We removed the reference of charitable organizations because they are not. What we had done is we were using the same agreement, and we just missed that, and they're not a 501(c)(3), so we removed that, and that's, Jackie has that updated. But other than that, everything should be good. And we did do the 18 months to then reevaluate and see what it looks like to then either fund the rest through 2026 or pull some back and be able to. Luke, remind me what the project is.
Thank you, Bailey.
Yep.
Good morning.
Good morning. And I guess a brief synopsis would be that we're moving forward with Building Warriors contract. We really appreciate this grant funding to be able to pursue the next 18 months to support our firefighters' families with EAP opportunities of both peer support. I had a meeting yesterday with Building Warriors and two of the clinicians in town here, and we have got other meetings that we can schedule later on this month. So everything's moving forward, we're really excited about it. We just need to get a good rollout in January for the firefighters' volunteer.
Thank you, Luke. Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, Luke, at this point, how many clinicians do you have on board for this?
Currently, we have two verbal agreements. Big part was getting the contract and getting the funding secured to be able to sign that contract with Building Warriors. We're looking for a few more. There's, I think I spoke about this last time we met too, is that there's kind of a criteria in terms of what their exposures are to first responders. So these clinicians are kind of vetted based on what their exposures are through what we do. Part of that is efficiency and funding in terms of some EAP programs have found out in the past that if an employee has like three sessions per year, let's say, but meets with a clinician that has no real touch with first responders, they spend the first two meetings explaining what they do. And so we're trying to avoid all that. So there is a little bit of a vetting process in those clinicians to make sure that they have some exposures to what we do first so that when our firefighters get into those meetings, they're not having to explain like what it's like to go on a tragic event, so.
And it'll be enough to start with these two that you've vetted and all, get the program going?
Yep, like I said, we've got several that are already kind of in the wings. We've already talked about. I haven't been able to reach out to them personally yet. I wanted to start with good foundation, get a good contract law, and make sure that this rollout cuts through as much red tape as possible so that firefighters aren't worried about what form to fill out, how to get in contact with the right person, how do I proceed? Get all of that stuff set first so that they're not worried about that kind of stuff. It appears, I'm a little bit naive to some of that stuff, but it appears that there are variances in terms of how that foundation is set has a lasting legacy in terms of how well it's used, if that makes sense. So a good EAP program, a good peer support program, and a good process through that provides the best benefit for firefighters. So we're trying to learn from other organizations and what challenges they have to make sure that we avoid those.
Right. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you're talking about barriers to entry.
That's correct.
You can't get there if it's too weird or bureaucratic or takes too long. It's frustrating.
Absolutely.
Is there any crossover with people who deal with, you know, clinicians who deal with military side? Have you ever looked that route?
In terms of like a clinician that already deals with military side being able to also be able to deal with the same trauma that we do with? Yeah, absolutely. I think that we've talked about a lot of clinicians who already have right now as vast military experience and actually has also exposures within the first responder realm based on family members. So yeah, there's a lot of crossover with that, for sure. Building Warriors does.
The experiences can be similar.
Very much so. So yeah, one of the things that's talked about, and I don't know how much specific science data supports it, but the exposures oftentimes in a short deployment will be very critical and new onset, acute versus a lifelong of exposures that accumulate. It's very similar, but can be present.
Thank you, Luke, for recognizing this as a need and for being willing to develop a program. Having been in the healthcare program business for a bit, have you thought about metrics to understand whether the program's working for your folks? Or actually, it's really interesting if you designed a metric system beforehand to measure it to be able to be useful to other firefighters, to be able to be useful to this commission to fund it going forward?
Yeah, absolutely. Started into those talks, there's nothing foundational yet, but it's definitely part of that rollout process. It's like, how do we know what the benefit is? How do we gauge that? How to quantify how much has been used and can we increase that? In terms of, is there a better benefit? We reach out to more people that aren't really utilizing it. There's a cultural shift, but also being able to quantify in terms of its efficiency. So yeah, we're talking about it. I don't, I honestly don't know that there's a perfect way to do that, but I'm confident with the people that we have at place that we'll be able to find something.
Yeah, I think that there's a lot of, from my experience, there's not much hard science, but there are surveys before a person goes into the program. Well, be, and then surveys six months in or a year that you might be able to compare. And maybe not peer-reviewed information, but enough to give you guys some feedback, say, hey, this is really working for it. We need to adjust this way, or maybe, you know, whatever. And I think that's really, for me, that's really interesting is as the country digests mental health and what that means, what it looks like. So.
Absolutely.
That's a good question. Just even if it's just a, you know, a subjective survey, not even not even scientific. I'm sure that somebody upon reflection could explain what the strengths of AIDS were in that and where the gaps might be, even if it's just for them, right? So that if, you know, if you could get voluntary surveys filled out, you saw sort of the same deficiency explained, you know, over and over, you'd know to address that, you know.
I do, it's challenging as Chairman Gozer explained. It's one of the biggest things is a cultural shift in that what we do is always dependent upon our readiness and physically and mentally what that readiness is. Physically, it's harder to hide in terms of somebody's physically hurt than not ready to perform the job. Mentally, we still have that same culture of people trying to hide those unreadiness. And so we have to be able to navigate those challenges culturally to be able to get into a survey. I think that, you know, the conversation we've had so far have been on the back end in terms of what was utilized, how many sessions were utilized, how effective was this in terms of a CISD? And what I mean by that is we have one, was it participation the next time? Was it participation the next time? And so being able to gauge that trend as opposed to an individual, sometimes that can be, that can be truly challenging, so.
Luke, there's got to be something in place from what, where you've been consulting in Colorado that has something already established that you could take from.
There's various models. There's various models, and so we're trying to work through the right ones. Some of the challenges that we're facing is that a lot of those models have to do with career departments versus volunteer departments. So they fit, but they don't fit well. So, but we'll get there, we'll get there for sure.
Thank you, Luke. Do you have any other questions, Commissioners? I entertain a motion for right, please.
I move that we approve the funded agreement between the board of commissioners and Albany County Fire District for the ARPA funds of $180,000.
Second. We've been seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, oh, did you guys, no, I just want to say thank you. Hearing and seeing, all is in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, all is both the same side. That motion carries. Thank you, Luke. Thank you to your team. Item nine, ratified grant applications to Wyoming Outdoor Recreation Grant Program to the American Rescue Plan Act, funding an amount of $1 million to complete the Phase One project at Pilot Hill. This is Bailey and Sarah.
Yeah, I'll step in and let Sarah chime in too. This was, the way they set this up was a pre-application, and then if they liked our pre-application, we got invited to do an actual application. So they did like the Pilot Hill project, so we were invited to the application. We had three weeks to complete it right in the middle of the election. So Sarah and the board worked very hard, and they got it completed just with a little assistance from us. But it was due before Thanksgiving. Jennifer did have a chance to review it before we submitted it. But everything should be good to go since now we hear from them, and I'll let Sarah add anything, for sure.
Thank you, Commissioners, and Bailey did an outstanding job of presenting this for you. Again, the hope is that this will allow us to really establish a dedicated trailhead with 50 to 70 parking spots for cars, spots for school buses, and an area as well for horse trailers to park and access the property in a manner where we're really focusing people onto the trail system and protecting the landscape in our best capacity. If the grant is awarded, we will really come down and celebrate.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, and Sarah, so is, will the grant be the entire award? Or do you know if they'll fund at least some of it? Or is it a yes or no?
They haven't indicated one direction or the other, Commissioner Ibera. I'm hoping that because of the pre-screening process that they determined grants that feasibly they can fund at the amounts requested, but I just don't know. There is about a million dollars that Pilot Hill will also be matching, and much of that will be in kind, but much of it will also be due to the generosity of other funders and foundations that we've been working with.
Any other questions, Commissioners? And when would you hear about that, Sarah? You don't know?
We don't know. We think it'll be probably mid-January, end of January.
The outdoor recreation department, this is not something they're used to doing. So I think they're, you know, trial and error is kind of what they're doing, and they have a plan set, and that's not always working out. So we're hoping to hear like middle of January, but we just don't know for sure.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. Commissioners, entertain a motion for item nine.
I move that we approve item nine as presented.
Second.
Seconded, any further discussion? Hearing seen, all is in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, all is both the same side.
That motion carries. Present for approval, item 10, grant award agreement between Wyoming Office of Homeland Security and Albany County for the 2022 State Homeland Grant Program in the amount of $67,256.61 for the purpose of securing funds to support the purchase of mobile and portable radios. Steph, are you alive? There you are.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Yes, I'm requesting approval for this grant for the purchase of wireless-compatible radios. These radios will be distributed to our volunteer first responder agencies, which provides them a lifeline and interoperable communications throughout the county and statewide.
Thank you, Steph. Any questions, Commissioners? Questions for the public? Entertained a motion for right, please.
I move that we approve the grant award between Wyoming Office of Homeland Security and Albany County in the amount of $67,000 for this securing funds for by mobile and portable radios.
Second.
Move is seconded, any further discussion?
It's always amazed me at how expensive radios are. Before I was elected, I fell on that radio because it's a few hundred bucks or whatever, and then they're like thousands of these, and it's crazy. It's always blown me away. You can buy a laptop, you can buy the best cell phone, and, you know, you can buy the best hardware there is, you know, with way more processing power than a radio.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, all is in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is both the same side. That motion carries. And Steph, looks like we have you on again for item 11. Present for approval, grant award agreement between Wyoming Office of Homeland Security and Albany County to utilize for the emergency management preparedness grant for the purpose to provide federal funds to assist state, local, territorial, and tribal governments in preparing for all hazards in the amount of $92,625 from October 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2023. Florence, yours, please.
Yes, thank you. Requesting approval for this. These monies are used for EMA salaries, office supplies and bills, and then as well as our travel and continuing education fund. Basically, it supports us to be able to do our job to ensure that the city of Laramie and Albany County are and remain resilient to hazards and disasters.
Commissioners, any questions? I entertain a motion for item 11, please.
I move that we approve item 11 as presented.
Second.
Move is seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, all is in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is both the same side, please. That motion carries. Item 12, present for approval fiscal year 2023. Thank you, Steph, appreciate it. High-risk rural roads program, self-recipitive agreement between Wyoming Department of Transportation and Allen County in the amount of $22,622.50 for the Soldier Springs Delinator Project. Rob, good morning.
Good morning. Commissioners, this is a grant that we received through the Wyoming Department of Transportation to the Delinators on Soldier Springs Road to help during snow events. It would have worked completely on Friday, but okay, they do help, so looking forward to helping to make that a safer road.
Commissioners, any questions for Rob?
Rob, a timeline. Did you have that done?
Actually, I guess once we get this signed, then the next process will be to go to an RFP.
The way Y dot works, close. The way Y dot works is after they get the fully executed agreement and we have turned in everything we need to, then they'll send us a, oh my goodness, it blinked out, a letter of, thank you, yes, a letter to proceed. Once we get that, they can go up for our P. But I did let Rob know he can go ahead and start working on it, but we just can't release it until we get that letter.
Probably this spring. Hopefully, I haven't done by summer.
Thank you. Ground balls.
Right. Commissioners, any other questions? Entertained a motion for item 12, please.
I move that we provide, 12 is presented.
Second.
Move is seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, all is in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is both the same side. That motion carries. 13, discuss and approve placing the prevention department under the purview of the public health nurse manager. Bailey and Jennifer, please.
Yeah, so as you know, we've hired a new prevention specialist. He started in November. After talking more, after he'd been here a little bit, it was acting like I was his supervisor, and I am so not. I was just the one doing the job while he was not there. It made sense, after having conversations with Sue and Kim, it really makes sense to put that position back under public health. A lot of other counties in the state, that's the setup that they have. That's the setup the state likes. It just seems to work because there's so much crossover. So after talking with Sue and Kim, we agreed that now is probably, you know, as good a time as any because he can start there. Different supervisors do different things with their employees, and let's just get it started now. I believe he's actually going to be moving over to public health. Drug court was a great setup for now, and Heather was very generous for her space. It just makes more sense to be with public health.
I'm just gonna say, you know, we're really excited to have Andrew on board. We're looking forward to all of his ideas, and it's my early Christmas present to Bailey. Put that on the record. And yeah, I just think it's a good fit, you know, and we're excited to have him back under us.
Commissioners, any questions?
No, I just want to point out that while I have been serving as the supervisor for this position, I didn't really have to do all that supervising with Bailey and Tracy. They did a really good job in the interim getting somebody in. But I think, as has been said, this is the right time to move it over there. And it's nice to have it sort of be as much as we can right now, a one-stop place as far as that kind of stuff. I will continue to be a liaison to cover that. I think this supervision will be okay.
All right. Thank you, guys, for being able to do that. Kim, thank you for willing to have another person.
Yeah.
At your charge.
The more the merrier, right?
Right.
The only question I have is, are you intimidated? Can it, is it easy? I mean, does it fit you, and is it something that you feel like?
Yeah, I think so. You know, like Bailey said, most of the counties do have prevention under public health, and it helps us check a lot of our boxes for deliverables as well. Yeah.
Okay. Superbowl.
Well, I'll be over there because I still supervise WIC, so I can always, yeah.
That's a hard job.
Not what I'm clinging to.
I entertain a motion for item 13, please.
I move that we approve item 14 as presented.
Second. Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, and all is a favor, say goodbye by saying hi, please.
Aye.
Aye, all's opposed, same side. That motion carries. Thank you, Kim, for being willing to do that. And thank you, Bailey, for your help in the interim. Item 14, present for consideration Larson Conditional Use Application CU-07-22. Joe, good morning. Sorry about the lecture.
Oh, yeah.
We're gonna have it back in March, I guarantee it.
I'm sure everybody misses the tinny, the tinny stand.
All right, so this applicant is Richard Larson. He's located at 15 Clearwater Trail. The request is for a conditional use to put a second dwelling on the property. Current zoning is rural residential. Current use is residential. There's a house on the property. The surrounding property use are also rural residential, and access can be off Clearwater Trail. There were some reviews. County assessor Chelsea Matthews had no concern. Rob Fisher, Road Bridge Superintendent, had no concerns. Albany County Fire, Luke Hawkins, had no concerns. Laramie Rivers Conservation District, Holly Dyer, resource specialist. Discuss vegetation erosion of wells. Her full comments can be seen in the review section. And Y dot, Taylor McPort, had no concerns. The applicable sections of the Albany County zoning resolution are chapter 5, section 5, and chapter 5, section 7. Findings necessary for approval pursuant to chapter 5, section 5 of the Albany County zoning resolution. The applicant has provided the required notice by posted sign, publication, and certified mailing. Pursuant to the Albany County zoning resolution, chapter 5, section 75, board of county commissioners must make the following findings: that the applicant has friends of site plans and or survey maps as required; that the proposed conditional use shall not harm the public health, safety, and well for a good community; that adequate public services are available for the proposed conditional use without creating an undue financial burden on accounting; and that the applicant has adequately addressed the following potential impacts. Staff analysis was that the applicant has provided a complete application and has addressed the potential impacts this use may cause. Upon approval of this conditional use, application is on its biggest application as required. In May, the applicant turned in a zoning certificate application for a press structure and accessory building. Both were approved and have been built or are in the process of being built. In September, the applicant turned in two small wastewater facility applications, and one of the site plans noted a house, while the other site plan noted a barn with an apartment. Seeing this note about the apartment kicked in our zoning regulations, which only allows one dwelling in it per parcel, a second dwelling can be permitted with the approval of conditional use application in rural residential zoning. Mr. Larson had received permission through his HOA well before coming to the county with his applications, but did not realize the county did not allow two dwellings on a rural residential parcel without approval of conditional use. Findings of fact, the findings necessary for approval and applicant responses referenced in this report are adopted as findings reflecting that the applicant has adequately addressed the specified impacts, and the same are incorporated herein. Conclusions of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with and is in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County zoning resolution and planning and zoning commission recommendation. Unanimously voted to recommend to the board of county commissioners to approve the Larson Conditional Use Application CU-07-22, adopting and incorporating the staff analysis, findings of fact, and conclusions of law as each are stated in this staff report.
Thank you, Joe. Commissioners, any questions for Steph? Okay. I entertain a motion for item 14, please.
I move that we approve the Larson Conditional Use Application CU-07-22, adopting and incorporating the findings of fact and conclusions of laws outlined in the staff report.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, and all is a favor, say goodbye by saying hi, please.
Aye.
Aye, all's opposed, same side. That motion carries. Thank you, Joe. Item 15, present for consideration the Einzbar subdivision preliminary plat application SD-02-22. Joe, please.
All right, the applicant owner is Galen Einzbar. He's located at 214 North Fork Road. The request is approve preliminary plat application. Current zoning is rural residential. Current use, there's a residence on the property. Access will be from East North Fork Road and North Fork Road. There were some reviews. Assessor's office, Chelsea Matthews had no, Chelsea Matthews had no concern. Karen Bowman, senior DRS analyst, had no concerns. Gina Munari, real estate supervisor, had no concerns. Jake Schneider, county engineer, had some comments regarding the engineering report and preliminary plat, but everything has been taken care of. Martin Curry, interim district manager for the Laramie Rivers Conservation District, believes that this is suitable use for the parcel. He noted that erosion should not be an issue with respect to water runoff on slopes, but when erosion and weed encroachment on disturbed land may be an issue. Care should be taken to minimize land disturbance. They also encourage rural, small acre land owners to test their will over three to five years. His full comments can be seen in the review section. Y dot, Ryan Shields, had no concerns. Summary of subdivision permit requirements. Water lots will be provided, domestic water from individual wells. Sewer lots will be provided sewer systems by individual systems that will need to be applied for through the Albany County Planning Office. There is an existing small wastewater system that serves the existing house, which is on proposed lot one. While we DEQ review, this application received a non-adverse recommendation. Storm drainage report was complete for this proposal and reviewed by Jake Schneider, county engineer. Rocky Mountain Power provides power to the area. Postal service is existing. No new roads are proposed. Road maintenance, the applicant will need to pay into the existing road maintenance provider, the North Fork Owners Association. Financial assurance for improvements is not required. Fire protection will be provided by Albany County. Notice has been provided in accordance with the Albany County planning and subdivision regulations, chapter 4, section 9. Findings of fact, the findings necessary for approval, applicant responses, and staff analysis of inclusion of required information as referenced in this report are affirmatively adopted as findings that the applicant has provided the board with adequate information that the requested and required findings documentation, notice, and notations have been satisfied by the applicant, and the same are incorporated herein. Conclusions of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with and is in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County planning and subdivision regulations. Staff analysis, at the May 11th, 2022, planning and zoning meeting, and the June 20th, the June 7th, 2022, board of county commissioners meeting, the variance request from county regulations for a small subdivision within an already-planted subdivision requiring a review and recommendation from WDEQ was denied for this application. The applicant has since followed county regulations for the review and recommendation from WDEQ. The preliminary plat complies with the Albany County planning and subdivision regulations. The subdivision is being proposed in the North Fork subdivision of Centennial. The lots would be accessed from North Fork Road and East North Fork Road. There was quite a lot of discussion from the planning and zoning commission on this. They had a lengthy discussion about the chapter 23 report submitted by, submitted to DEQ. Mr. Hinckley, Ms. Hanning, and Mr. Thine felt that calculations were not complete to property. The commission scheduled a work session to speak with the applicant consultant, WDEQ, and other professionals that prepare these reports. They had no other issues with the application. The planning and zoning recommendation voted four to one to recommend to the board of county commissioners approval of the Einzbar subdivision preliminary plat application SD-02-22, adopting and incorporating the staff analysis, findings of fact, and conclusions of law as stated in the staff report, along with the following condition: that the commissioners' concerns regarding the adequacy of the evaluation of the impact to groundwater quality will be addressed, and those concerns will be put in writing by the chair. Commissioner Kennedy was the dissenting vote. And that letter has, I guess, been drafted, but not approved by the planning commission, and that's supposed to be on next Wednesday's meeting, if you guys...
Joe, was that not on the agenda for yesterday, but not discussed?
It was on the agenda, and the meeting was adjourned without talking about it, so I don't know what happened.
Okay, so the issue itself has not been resolved?
Correct.
As far as these concerns?
No.
Okay. And is there a legal access issue?
No. There is not.
That has been resolved because there were some...
It's never been about access. It's been about road maintenance, and the owners, the surrounding neighbors, their concerns were... I guess currently, they are not paying, are not forced to be paying into the road maintenance of the surrounding roads that get them to their house. But I guess they have been paying it. They just haven't formally been included in, you know, paperwork or whatever. And so, they just wanted to make sure that both the Einzbars, as well as whoever they sell it to, will be required to pay into that.
Okay, but that's not something planning has control over, right? It's something that that district...
It is. It includes, with it being in the staff report, it's, it is a condition.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And Joe, this is similar to a previous one, where there was some... We have approved a preliminary plat, but that had not been as... We did not emphasize the condition. And so, it made the planning and zoning not know whether we were on board with the condition or if we just approved the preliminary plat. So, just for the commissioner, you'd make a motion and make sure the condition is... If you want it in there, great. If you don't want it in there, please don't put it in there. But let's be a little more specific, and that way we'll clear up that confusion that I listened to.
I have a question. I guess they go, you know, lots of times, boards hear commentary that's... That has to do with preference, but doesn't necessarily have any bearing law or regulation. And to me, the access and paying into the road fund is, you know, the road improvement thing is one of those. I don't, I don't know why we would... I'm trying to figure out why we would impose that condition when it can be noted in the subdivision voluntarily. Why wouldn't, I mean... I'm guessing, there is a question in here. I'm guessing that the, well, I actually know that property. I've dealt with it for years, and it's adjacent to, but outside the North Fork Road Improvement District. But they pay into it because they're, I mean, they're not required, but for all intents and purposes. You know, the East North Fork forms the edge of it. I mean, they... So... Can't they just do that in their subdivision language, you know? Rather than us making it a condition? I mean, then we're sort of acting as a proxy for the Road Improvement District. And I don't really understand why we would insert ourselves in that when it's not really an issue. I mean... We would expect the neighbors to all want to pay, right? The subdivision language itself, how... And I don't know, maybe they could find a way to expand the Road Improvement District to include it. But maybe all they really need is for the, you know, this is a one lot that's being split into two. But they have the plat language. Why would we require that to... When we don't, I'm not even sure we have the authority. To me, it's just like something that the subdivision would do.
Yeah, so I don't have the regulations in front of me, but there is a regulation that says, create, basically create a road maintenance agreement.
Right.
Or pay the people that are maintenance, are doing the maintenance on the road. And so, that's what this is for.
So, if it's already in our language, why would we emphasize that in... Why would we restate it as a condition when it's already a condition?
I think the condition they're referring to are the impacts to the groundwater quality that you want.
Oh, I was speaking specifically to the, not the road issue.
So, on the road issue, there's a requirement, like Joe mentioned, that says that you have to either have a road maintenance agreement if you're creating your own subdivision, and then you have to have an agreement if you're connecting to a private road. So, we can have it as the, and I tell you, I have it.
Well, it would already be in the findings of fact and conclusions of law because it's, it's in our regulations. So, why would we restate it as a condition, especially on a preliminary plat? Maybe the final plat came back, and they hadn't dealt with that.
I might.
Are we trying to re-bring too much final plat stuff into preliminary plat?
I don't know for certain, and maybe Joe's the better one to answer this. My guess would be they're just pointing out that they need to get that done, have that agreement in place before they bring the final plat.
Right.
But I could be wrong.
Right.
But our staff would tell them that.
Yes, but sometimes it's easier when it's in writing. So, there's no question later.
And I think that the chapter 23 stuff falls in the same category. You know, you have to get through planning, go through the process, or they could come back to us with a final plat anyway. And so, the planning could, you know, it just seems overwrought. Man, I looked at that application. I've never seen something like that for a one-lot subdivision, ever. Especially lots that big. It's just like so far out there, the level of micromanagement. I just can't even believe it. It's, that's not even a particularly vulnerable area. It's like a pet project for the planning, for the sentiments, you know, professional sentiments of planning commissioners, that doesn't really apply in a situation like this. And so, I, you know, they can go back and fix some multiplier in the chapter 23 report without us telling them you have to, or we're gonna drop the hammer on them. That's just like cleaning up the application. I don't really understand why there's so much... I'm gonna call it disincentive. I, I think that if I were a property owner and I wanted to subdivide, and I had to go through that... I mean, it's kind of insulting. Nobody's ever shown any disinterest in satisfying regulations or going through the process. So, if we hold their hand really tightly and take them across the street, that's insulting to me. I don't know why we would expect anything to come back for a final plat that's not complete. And I, and the groundwater business, it was just totally overwrought. Just because, just because maybe we can throw that kind of stuff out of that.
Joe, correct me if I'm wrong. Wasn't the issue that, the past example that Commissioner Gosar was referring to just that, the representation for how legal representation? You're saying that we couldn't put these demands on beyond our W...
Can I help? So, what, sorry, I hate standing here and being back to everyone. So, what the advice that was given to planning was? The recommendation that comes from DEQ is either an adverse or a non-adverse recommendation. But with our delegation agreement and with the information coming from DEQ just being that recommendation, planning and zoning has the ability to look at the application and the title or the chapter 23 report and ask questions, if they have them, about how... ask questions if they have them about how numbers were derived. I don't know specifically about this one on the Howell Acres that I sat in on yesterday. There were questions about not, I don't know that there were questions about the accuracy of the report, but more about things either not being completely represented and asking for clarification or clarification of how they got the numbers that they were using in the report. I believe with this one and also with Howell Acres, they're not saying your report is insufficient. What they're saying is it's looking to us like we took two and two and made five. Can you explain to us? Maybe one of these is three and we just aren't reading it the right way. So what they're asking for from the Planning and Zoning Commission with both this one and Howell Acres that we talked about yesterday is clarification of the data, I believe, that was used in those title 23, or the chapter, chapter 23 reports. So legally, our analysis has been that they have the right to request that clarification because the recommendation that comes from DEQ is just that, a recommendation, and it is not binding. Statute allows for it to not be binding.
Well, that speaks to my point about, you know, you could, this is like, if it were close, you know, to affecting groundwater or, I mean, even anywhere in the ballpark, then that would matter. But this is like saying we won't approve your preliminary plat unless you get the punctuation right. I mean, that might be a little bit dramatic on my part, but the point is, I don't understand why the planning commission is belaboring the point when they have all the way till the final plat to, to clarify their math. And in the end, the end result isn't going to be anywhere close to an adverse groundwater effect. It's just flexing bureaucratic muscle for its own sake. There's not a measurable deliverable at the end that would affect the application one way or another. So just because the planning commission has the right in law to micromanage at that level, that level of micromanagement is only justified when groundwater is threatened or close to being threatened and the corrections would make a difference. But in this particular case, it's not even close. It's just nitpicking. Does that make sense? So I, like, but for us to have this conversation, if this commission doesn't understand that, you know, it sounds pretty bland and non-adverse recommendation, but the way that the math works, you know, on nitrate loading and, you know, runoff and all of the things that can affect groundwater, it's not close. So, so because it's their day job, they're just picking when, when they don't need to, as far as it affects the, the quality of the application or, you know, what the, what the process tries to accomplish in protecting groundwater.
So I will, Kim, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Go ahead.
No, that's it.
Okay. So I will tell you, I, I don't science. It's not my thing. I don't understand the calculations. I don't understand any of it. But for me, the way that it makes sense to me is when I have been on boards before and there have been contracts that come through, I don't disregard the fact that in my day job, I read contracts and edit them so that they're good going forward. I think it's similar to what planning and zoning is doing. I go through contracts and all the things that I do and point out, you know, that this contract isn't great because of these things. Then whether they get fixed or don't get fixed, maybe it doesn't affect the outcome in all reality.
Well, the outcome, the goal is to protect water quality. So whether the, there's a period at the end of a sentence or a sentence is poorly worded in a contract, doesn't mean that water quality would get hurt because the sentence isn't written right. That's the difference.
No, but if you're missing big clauses or things, you, like we have standard terms we put in contracts.
Well, what I'm telling you is that, the, the example you use isn't relevant to this situation in the sense that this can't affect groundwater quality unless they're doing something insane on that piece of property. The way the setbacks are and the distance to groundwater and all of the things, it's just not gonna. And so, so because we have a process that says you have to do all this, you know, it would be like a rancher having to get a permit to put up fence and having to get a DEQ air quality permit to put postals in and string wire. If, if that process exists, then they have to jump through the process. But it doesn't mean they're going to affect air quality by putting up a fence. That's my point. It, it goes back to, to whether we should use all of the tools available to us on a, on a subdivision like this just because we have them and we can, as opposed to using them because we think that water quality is going to be affected, because it creates a disincentive for development.
Jennifer, could you answer that? And then I'm going to follow up because I did watch all eight hours of those meetings.
Yeah. And I, and what I would say to you is, from our office's standpoint, what we've tried to convey to planning and zoning is regardless of whether this property is not going to affect water quality and this one is, at, at the planning and zoning level, their process needs to be the same. And then when their recommendations come out from planning and zoning, ultimately in a final plat, whether it's an approval or a deny, even if they deny it, the applicant has the ability to bring it in front of you. And at that time, this board could look and say, well, yes, planning and zoning brought up all of these things, but given the location, we aren't concerned. Or because we want to have all of these things addressed and we feel like the underlying math or science or whatever is problematic, then we're going to deny it. So I'll leave it at that. But I just, from our office's perspective, we have tried to, in talking to Joe and David when they're going through applications in the Planning and Zoning Commission, is that consistency. Do the same thing with every application that you look at. And then whatever the results are at the end is, is what the results are. But if we have the same process that on our end, when we're looking at defending the county or doing what we think is best for the county, that consistency for us is a good thing. What you guys just do that.
Well, so I agree with the consistency. To me, it's just, this is a preliminary plat.
And I will.
You know, this stuff can, it can all get dealt with. It's like we're down in the planner's, too far down in the planner's job in this discussion.
And I think, and David and Joe can correct me if I'm wrong, I think what this planning commission is trying to do when the preliminary plats come in is bring all of these things up so that the applicant has the time and ability so that they know what our planning commission is looking at, so that when they bring those, the final plat, those things have been addressed and we're not bringing up new things when that final plat application is submitted that we maybe hadn't discussed with them previously.
Yeah. And I would recommend watching that video, those videos. I mean, I know it's eight hours or something, short of that. But it was incredibly informative to me as a commissioner. I, I'm not a hydrologist, I'm not a geologist. And so these applications have not been slowed down a minute. This has not been delayed. The Howl has not been delayed a minute. What has been done is to say, hey, we are professionals. Please satisfy us that the science works. They're saying things, and I'm just going to paraphrase what I heard, that don't add up. And then your analogy was good, Jennifer. They say, help us to add it up. In fact, the November 29th meeting was a work session where other hydrology companies were invited to have a conversation about how do we do it better from our end? So, and how do we convey our expectations to you guys so that we don't end up having to do this over and over and over and over again? And what do you see from your perspective that would be helpful to us? I thought that was a real reasonable approach. And if you listen to those recordings, I'm incredibly impressed with our planning and zoning commission. At no point do they try to stop anybody. In fact, today, they have a condition here that says, these people, hey, we've moved your, your preliminary plat. These are the things we'd like to see. If it's similar to the Howl, there's a letter associated that I think that Joe referenced that was sent out in May that had their concerns through no fault of the planning and zoning commission. That was not replied to until 40 minutes before the meeting in November. And so I've got to think, right, if we're going to ask people to do a job and it's volunteer and they have expertise, we should get out of their way too. If, if they're, if our assertion is there in the planning and zoning, well, maybe we shouldn't be the planning and zoning commission. And I would recommend, not only this commission, but anybody in the public who would like to understand where they're coming from, listen to the November 16th YouTube meeting and the November 29th YouTube meeting and work session. It is incredibly revelatory about how the process can and will work. And they're, it's bumping right now, but it's moving towards smooth. And I'm appreciative of the work those people do. And they've done it at great discomfort to themselves. They've had meeting after meeting after meeting after meeting, scheduled to be helpful. And so that's my take on it. And that's why I asked, as I learned from that meeting, that if we're going to make a motion, we make a definite motion so that that be helpful to them. Any other questions?
No. And I appreciate everything you said, Commissioner Gosar, and you as well, Jennifer, your explanation today. To me, just, you know, my layman's viewpoint here is that not only is the P and Z, but legal staff as well as planning department are trying to facilitate applicants as much as possible to get things going through, things that they may not have seen that down the line might be an impediment to their process. And also, I have no issue, any issue whatsoever, putting on additional conditions so that those applicants are much more aware and prepared when it does come to the final plat. So I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, Joe, or David, anything to add to the science part? You don't have to. I just want to make, give you the opportunity to add and then we'll proceed with that.
I mean, I, I would just add that, that, yeah, I mean, I, planning zoning really does want to make sure that these folks are kind of doing these things correctly. And that, I mean, I'm honestly learning about the DEQ process because, I mean, in our office, we don't have the technical expertise. And so it's, it's been, they turn in an application, we go with what DEQ sets, you know? That's just how it's been. But now it's, I'm coming to understand a little bit better, you know, the different variables that go into this and, and, you know, how important it is to just make sure that we're protecting our water quality. But I do want to give credit to you, Chair Gosar, that's, that's amazing that you've watched those, those meetings. I don't know, I'm going to go back to my office and make up an award or something. But yeah, I, I think they would be super informative for others to watch those. Maybe not all eight hours, but yeah, super informative just about the process, the thought process of planning and zoning commission. Yeah, that's my thesis.
And you know, I don't want to move our own horn, but I want to, I want to recognize that this commission has voted to put some scientists on the P and Z, which has always been the case in the past. And obviously, it has helped out the planning department with that expertise.
I'd like to take motion prior to 15, please.
I move that we approve the Einzbar subdivision, preliminary plat application subdivision permit, adopting and incorporating staff analysis, findings, fact and conclusion of law as are stated in the report with the following additional conditions, that the applicant pay into the North Fork, what is that, NFOA for road maintenance, as well as address the impacts to the groundwater quality that has been put forth by P and Z.
Second. Move it second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I watched all eight hours.
Yeah, you need social length.
And I was, okay, I needed something to do. It's true. We haven't held them up in the sense that when they get to the, meet the benchmarks, that in our process, they move along. But what it takes to get to the benchmarks is overwrought. It's too much. That application through one lot split into two is bonkers. I just, it's just.
But the application is no different. There's just a few more questions that have come with the application.
The amount of information that the applicant has had to provide and go back through and back through and back through. I mean, that's a huge application to split one lot. And if there was a valuable, measurable, deliverable at the end of it, you know, if something were to be accomplished by that much micromanagement, it would make sense to do it.
Question. I'm sorry, Edgar, but you've already said that. We don't need to hear it again.
I should recall, move to second. All those in favor, stick your thumb up by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, I'll just pose a sign. That motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for the discussion and, and thanks for, for doing the, the work on that. I, I got to tell you, it's really important that our meetings be put out on YouTube because if that was allowed, you know, I had a concern from the public and I was able to go look through the meeting. And as a former football player, we used to say, the eye in the sky don't lie. And it is really informative to watch the film. So, I have 16. Present for consideration the Taylor Field subdivision preliminary and final plat application, SD 1022. Joe, please.
All right. The applicant owner is Steven Taylor, located at 114 Hornsboro Road. Request is approval of a preliminary final plat and a subdivision permit. Current zoning is rural residential. Current uses residential access. One lot will be accessed for Hornsboro Road and one lot will be accessed for Molten Road slash Paragon Lane. There were some reviews. Karen Bowman, senior data analyst, had no concerns. Chelsea Matthews, county assessor, had no concerns. Jake Schneider, county engineer, had concerns about the preliminary and final plats, but they were taken care of. Rob Fisher, superintendent of Road Bridge, said that an approach license will not be required. Martin Curry, district manager of the Laramie Rivers Conservation District, discussed the vegetation erosion and wells. Full comments can be seen in the review section. Y. Taylor McCourt, District 1 Traffic Engineer, had no comments. Summary of subdivision permit requirements, water, both lots have existing water services provided by Nine Mile Water District. Sewer, both lots have subject systems installed. Storm drainage report was complete for this proposal and reviewed by Jake Schneider, county engineer. Both parcels have electricity and ethyl gas. Postal service is already existing to both lots. No roads are proposed. No road maintenance is required. Financial assurance, none is needed. Fire protection will be provided by Albany County. Notice has been provided in accordance with Albany County Plating and Subdivision Regulations, Chapter 4, Section 9. Findings of fact, the findings necessary for approval, applicant responses and staff analysis of inclusion of required information as referenced in this report are affirmatively adopted as findings that the applicant has provided the board with adequate information and that the requested and required findings, documentation, notice and notations have been satisfied by the applicant and the C M R Incorporated herein. Inclusion of law, the applicant is proceeding in accordance with and is in compliance with the requirements of the Albany County Plating and Subdivision Regulations. Staff analysis, this subdivision is a frozen, already developed area. One lot will be accessed from Hornsboro Road. One lot will be accessed from Molten Road slash Paragon Lane. The addition of one lot in this area should not create any substantial impacts to the area. The preliminary and final plats comply with the standards of the Albany County Plating and Subdivision Regulations. Planning and zoning commission recommendation was to unanimously recommend to the board of county commissioners to approve the Taylor Field subdivision preliminary and final plat application, SD 1022, and a subdivision permit adopting and incorporating the staff analysis, findings of fact and conclusions of law as each are stated in this staff report. as each are stated in this staff report.
Thank you, Joe. Commissioners, any questions? You have a question? I entertain a motion for item sixteen, please.
I move that we approve the Taylor Field subdivision preliminary and final plat application, S D one zero two two, incorporating the findings of fact and conclusions of law. Incorporating and adopting findings of fact and conclusions of laws outside of staff report.
Second.
Move to second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, none of us in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side. That motion carries. All right, Joe, you're almost done. Get to the end seventeen, present for consideration a renewal of the two thousand twenty-two mobile home park license for Cave R D Mobile Home Park. Joe, please.
Yeah, so we got Cave R D's application. Our enforcement officer checked it out and said their problems were corrected. And so we're here for the license. Any questions?
I entertain a motion for seventeen now.
I move that we approve item seventeen.
Second. Move in second, any further discussion? Hearing, seeing, none of us in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same side. That motion carries. Item eighteen, excuse me, present for consideration a large tract subdivision exemption for property located in section twenty-three Township fourteen North Rain Seventy West of the Sixth Prime Meridian. Joey, good morning, how are you?
Good, thank you. So Mr. Jack Settlemeyer has requested an exemption from the large tract subdivision regulations to create approximately thirty-five point zero nine acre tract from an existing eighty-seven point two acre tract. Albany County Subdivision Resolution, Chapter four, Section seven, requires exemptions from the large tract subdivision regulations to meet the following criteria: provide legal description or record of survey, address any water rights, provide water supply study for any proposed water system, or provide the disclaimer, no proposed central water supply system, and the division shall create ten or less parcels. Based on our review and the information provided, the requested large tract exemption meets the required needed to grant this exemption.
Joey, commissioners, any questions? There are no questions. I entertain a motion for item eighteen, please.
I move that we approve item eighteen as presented.
Second.
Moved in second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, none of us in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side. That motion carries. Thank you, Joey, for your presentation, appreciate it. Nineteen, present for approval amendment number one to the contract between the City of Laramie Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming and Logan Simpson for the development of a growth area plan and authorize the chairman to decide. David, thanks.
Yeah. Chair and commissioners, so the Logan Simpson contract is set to expire in this month. And obviously, there's more work to do, and we'd like to keep them on for a little bit longer. It's been, it's the request, our request, planning office request to extend their contract through December of the first to May thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three. Working working towards getting that approved by that time. That's our request at this time is to extend the contract.
David, commissioners, any questions? There's no financial note to this either, Dave, right?
No, we've already got a contract with them. It's it won't increase the cost, it's just the the amount of time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any feel? I entertain a motion for item nineteen, please.
I move that we approve amendment number one to the contract between the city and county and Logan Simpson for the development of growth area plan and authorize the chairman to sign.
Second. Move in second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, none of us in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same side. That motion carries. I have twenty percent for approval amendment number one to the contract between the City of Laramie Board City of Laramie, excuse me, Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming, Stantec Consulting Services for the update of the Casper Aquifer Protection Plan and authorize the chairman to decide. David, thanks.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, this is the same ask, different company. It's Stantec Consulting. Their their contract is set to expire into this month as well. This one is remaining as to extended June thirty-first or June thirtieth, I don't think that's June. But, yeah, so two thousand twenty-three. And honestly, the dates probably should have been the same on these, but we got the Logan Simpson one going first, and then the the Stantec one came in behind it. The city's like, well, let's just do it to June thirtieth, because that's when they're considering. So I don't think it makes that big of a deal on our end, because we've committed to both contracts and such impact.
David, commissioners, any questions?
I entertain a motion for item twenty, now.
I move that we approve amendment number one to the contract between the city and county with Stantec Consulting Services to extend the date of the contract and authorize the chairman to sign.
Second. So we moved in second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, none of us in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Aye. That motion carries. We still have more with you, David, thank you. Twenty-one, present for consideration amendments to the Albany County zoning resolution affecting zoning changes, conditional use requirements, and definitions.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so the zoning amendments we have before you at this time, it's actually been quite a few months of work that went into them. Chair Hinkley was involved, and Matt Ayers and Jennifer Hurden was involved in our office. And so we kind of were all brainstorming some ideas and thoughts due to the change in the statutes that basically clarified some of the court cases that had happened before when it comes to use the conference plan with our zoning regulations. And so what what is being proposed to you today is is really a separation of how we do a zone change process, which is we've changed with this amendment called a zone district amendment. Is is the terminology we'll use. We've separated that out from the other permits just because of the difference in how the conference plan could use you know, regular land use permits and zoning amendment and process. And so we've separated those out. We've made some changes to the zoning district amendment process. That's where most the kind of the heavy lift was there. This is really minor, but we changed planning office to planning department to the consistent with what's required by the legislature for us to do what we're doing zoning wise. So with this ask, I would, if if it does get approved, I would ask that we make an effective date of January first, just because we will have to make some changes to our applications and those types of things. So just give us some time before before we're here to get those in place, if that's okay. If not, I mean, we can, we can, that's the only additional ask that I would have. And and that's all I have. If there's any questions about any of these, I'd love to have a chat with those.
Yeah, David, could you just kind of explain the process for someone who wasn't involved in it? To raise the planning and zoning out for public comments for a certain amount of dates? And change those out for public comment for certain dates? Just kind of go through that.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah. So so the draft was was created, and then it went to the planning and zoning commission. They then have the chance to review that as a body, make changes, amendments, look through whatever, discuss, debate, whatever. And so once that's completed, they then they they accept the document and then publish notice of the amendment for thirty days before a public hearing before their body. And so we did that. They received the received any comments that they had for that, which was, I believe, none. So we didn't have any comments. And then they they made a they moved to make a recommendation to the board of county commissioners for approval. So once we get to that point, we bring it to you guys. You guys look at it and kind of have a first go before we publish. And then once you feel okay with it, you direct the staff to publish and then republish it for forty-five days. It requires forty-five days to regular amendments, administrative procedures act. And so you've done that. We came back today, having met that forty-five day criteria, provided a chance or a public hearing and a chance for the public to discuss the amendments. And then it's now on your docket for approval or or not, or whatever you want to do with the decision in some manner. So that's where we came from, and that's where we're now today.
Thank you, David, for that synopsis, I appreciate it.
David, just reading through this document, I noted just some editing. There is a word missing in one page of land use on page two dash three. A specific description of how a particular parcel of is occupied. I think that it's missing a particular parcel of land is occupied or utilized. That's on page two, three, under land use. And then on page three dash twenty-one, ord is phonetically spelled, B O R D. It's missing the A. And I think that was really it. This is going to be approved, let's have a professional document.
Exactly.
And I'm pretty sure those aren't substantive.
No.
Right?
No.
Tight eye.
I'm actually gonna start sending stuff today.
Well, I'm reading things, you guys are watching. No, we're not, we're basis cover, right? You're watching meetings, I'm watching what comes out of that.
Any other, any other questions for David? All right. And I entertain a motion for item twenty-one, it is.
I move that we approve the amendments to the Albany County zoning resolution affecting zoning changes, conditional use requirements, and definitions, and make these effective January one, two thousand twenty-three.
Second. Move in second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, none of us in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, all opposed, same side. That motion carries. Thank you so much, thank you guys for your work today and on all this stuff. Appreciate it, and we'll see you here in the distant future. Twenty-two, present for approval Wyoming Law Enforcement Extraterritorial Assistance Memorandum for Understanding Between the Laramie Police Department and the Albany County Sheriff's Office for the Purpose of Permitting the Parties to Assign Specific Certified Peace Officers for Law Enforcement Services Within the Boundaries of Albany County, Wyoming, and the City of Downey. Okay, we're back online. And I think we approve twenty-two. Did we do that? Thank you. Twenty-three, present for approval. Thank you, Sheriff, as during you.
No, I think I'm on the next.
Okay, thank you. Present for approval quote from the Power DMS for a power policy professional subscription in the amount of twenty-two thousand three sixty-one ninety-seven cents to be paid over a two-year period recalling the policy and compliance management platform. Sheriff, thank you.
Yes, this is a quote for policy management, training management, policy complacency, and scheduling as well within our department. We're basically gonna digitize our our entire systems that we have. And Power DMS is gonna provide that force. They provide that that electronic service to help us out, archive, organize. And then if we decide to move down the line towards accreditation, that system is already built with Power DMS. There we can, we can move towards accreditation. But this is, like you said, a two-year agreement. The current system we have within the county bamboo doesn't necessarily follow the sheriff's office needs. We have a set of kind of specific criteria and things that we do that are not the same with every other department within within the county. So this system will help us out, really break us into the digital century and reduce all the paperwork and some forms that the that we have, the processes that we're doing.
And this will start being set up as early as tomorrow?
I mean, it'll sign in, yeah, it'll basically get signed today, and then we'll get started going. It's gonna take us about ninety days to get fully implemented. So the archive of our old of our old policies, old training logs, and that's I guess we should be ready and rolling within ninety days. So then for the training programs, it'll take us another forty-five days on top of that.
Sheriff, will there be will there be an online part of your policy? So so your policy will be online?
Yeah, we'll be able to publish it, so everything will be there. So and when we make changes or anything like that, it'll automatically be up.
Super. This is just background, this is a conversation that we may think about more in depth, not just at the sheriff's office, but with other departments, sort of like officials. Yeah, so that we can have some standardization.
Right, yeah, we we consulted HR on this beforehand, because we know that the HR's looking at a new system.
Yeah, nobody's been really happy with that.
It it doesn't necessarily meet all of the needs, it meets some of our needs. But either way, when the county starts to move towards a new HR payroll system, it's still not going to, it probably isn't going to meet all the needs of the sheriff's office just because of some of the specific things that we do, specific processes that we have. So unfortunately, we we looked at everything we could to try and have just one system, one electronic system for policies, procedures, payroll, everything for the county. But unfortunately, my office makes things difficult for for Albany County. So we'll have to have two. So this is this is the one little supplement to just about everything for the sheriff's office.
Sheriff, any other questions? I entertain a motion for item twenty-three, please.
I move that we approve item twenty-three as presented.
Second. Move in second, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, none of us in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side, please. That motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item twenty-four, present for approval, City Council Resolution, two thousand twenty-two, des. Item twenty-four, present for approval, city council resolution, twenty twenty-two, desk six-nine, Albany County Board of Commissioners Resolution. Twenty twenty-two dash zero two zero, resolution appointing one member to the Laramie Regional Airport Joint Powers Board. So, so the resolution reads. Whereas the Laramie Regional Airport Board shall be organized as a joint powers board under the Wyoming Joint Powers Act, one state statute sixteen dash one dash one oh one. And sec nineteen seventy-seven has amended, Secretary of State of Wyoming confirmed the board was formally organized as a joint powers board as of June twenty-fourth, nineteen sixty-five. The prayers of the board shall be conducted at all times in a manner consistent with the provisions of the act. Whereas the current court amendment bylaws of Laramie Regional Airport Board states, the board shall consist of five members, all of whom shall be qualified electors of Albany County, Wyoming. And shall be appointed by the joint action of the Board of County Commissioners of Albany County and the City Council of the city of Laramie. Members of the board shall serve for a five-year term. One new member of the board shall be appointed by joint action of the Board of County Commissions. And the city council in their January meeting of each year, and all the members of the board shall serve until their successors have been duly appointed and qualified. Vacancies for an expired term shall be filled by appointments resulting from the joint action of the Board of County Commissioners and the city council. And whereas Tracy Fletcher's term expires on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, creating one vacancy on the Laramie Regional Airport Joint Powers Board. Whereas city council and Albany County Commissioner Southfield is making vacancy pursuant to the law. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Albany County, Wyoming, and the city council of Laramie, Wyoming resolve section one, that the foregoing recitals are incorporated in and made part of this resolution by this reference. Section two, the Tracy Fletcher Albany County Treasurer is hereby appointed to fill the vacancy of the Laramie Regional Airport Board for term expiring September thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. There are the administration pieces of past that signature. Any questions? Tracy, thank you. Twenty twenty-seven. Yay. I guess she can find any.
Good morning. Thank you, commissioners.
Yeah, I appreciate you putting your name in there and being willing to, to serve and for the work you've done so far. Commissioners, any questions? Okay, I entertain a motion for item twenty-four then.
I move that we approve. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty. Resolution twenty Tracy Fletcher of the Laramie Regional Airport Joint Powers.
Second.
It's been moved to the second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, none of us in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side. That passes. Thank you. Thanks, Tracy. I appreciate it. Item twenty-five, acknowledge receipt of a letter of resignation from Jackie Williams from Albany County Historic Preservation Board. Curse reads, is my deepest regret that I will have to resign from my position as a board member and treasurer effective Monday, November fourteenth. Not only will I be moving to Florida for my family's health in the coming weeks, but also my family required more of my presence during this time. Thanks for your understanding. Sincerely, Jackie Williams. I will miss her at the Albany County Historic Preservation Board. And I entertain a motion for item twenty-five.
I move that we acknowledge receipt of the letter of resignation from Jackie Williams.
Second.
Move to second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, none of us in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side. That motion carries. Item twenty-six, make appointments to the Albany County Planning and Zoning Commission. Maybe we'll just make those independent one at a time.
I move that we appoint Keith Kennedy. The Albany County Planning and Zoning Commission. Second.
That motion dies for lack of a second. I entertain another motion for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I move that we appoint Mara Hanny to the Albany County Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, none of us in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side. That motion carries. We have one more term left.
I move that we appoint Diana Corder to Albany County Planning and Zoning.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, none of us in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side. That motion carries. Thank you, and thanks to all of those folks. We benefited Albany County from having way too many qualified people and way too few slots. It's a benefit. The curse sometimes. Twenty-seven, approve vouchers for November twenty twenty-two. I entertain a motion for that.
I move that we approve the vouchers for November twenty-two.
Second.
Move to second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, none of us in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side. That motion carries. Item twenty-eight, executive session pursuant to Wyoming's state statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five A triple I. I entertain a motion.
I move that we adjourn for regular session and move to executive session, session pursuant to. Statute sixteen dash four dash four zero five A I I I.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Hearing and seeing, none of us in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, all opposed, same side.
I know.
That motion carries. Leaving regular session, entering executive session.